I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight. I want to thank everyone in the audience for coming. I'll give you a little history on myself and my family. My family came to Smithtown in 1938. My grandfather, my father had a farm in Wisconsin. It was from brown road all the way through 347, before 347 was here, almost a Jerrit River Turnpike, and up where the current Fairfield apartments are also. They came here and got involved and they've Smithtown a better place. Smithtown's grown substantially since then. I'm married, forty-two years. I have four children, from thirty-five to forty-five. I have eight grandchildren, from one-year-old to eighteen-years-old. I do this job, I got involved in 1998. Actually, I can't believe it, twenty-eight years ago, because the town was treating its residents not nice. That's a nice way to put it. Basically, I sit at the parents', basically make them spit blood every time they came into the office. So I got involved, got in the primary, and won the primary. And I've been here for the last twenty-eight years. I want to thank people in the audience for supporting me and electing me for the parents'. Twenty-eight years resoundingly from sixty to seventy-five percent over that period of time. Because when you do a good job for the residents of this town, they put you back in office because they respect what you do and you respect them. You treat them like customers. You don't treat them like pains in the neck, like a lot of different towns do to their constituents and residents. Every person here, and it's gotten a lot better over the last eighty years, where we really made a difference. We've got a totally new crew of younger individuals working as the department heads. And thanks to the current supervisors, Mr. Wareman, they really care. And they're young, and they care about the town. And they're helping us make it what it should be for the future. And it is very important that we keep moving forward, and that's what we're going to continue to do. As long as you'll have me, I'll be here, and thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Catalonado?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all for coming, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting us tonight. My name is Michael Catalonado. I am a lifelong Smithtown resident. I graduated high school here in 1997. Currently live here with my beautiful wife, Marissa, who's over there, and our three children, Michael, Matt, and Max, who are fifteen, thirteen, and nine-years-old. After high school, I went down to Salisbury University where I got a BS in accounting, and then my masters in business administration down there. Came back up here and went to Toro Law School where I got my Juris Doctor. Opened my law practice here in Smithtown in 2007, and have been running that successfully here ever since. In 2019, I ran successfully for the school board in Smithtown Central School District. And I served there for two terms, six years. One of those years, I served as vice president, and another year, I served as president there. I have now decided to take the leap and move into running for town council. And the reasons being that I'm truly invested in this town. I have been my whole life. I live here, I work here, I have my business here, my wife works here, my children go to school here. So this town is incredibly important to me. And I want to see it grow and continue to develop and get better. And some of the reasons that I'm running is that I want to see term limits in place. I want to see every twelve years, new blood in these seats that will bring some new life, new ideas, new questions to the board. I want to see transparency. I'm kind of tired of the five-oh on every single vote. I want to see voices that come in and say, you know, maybe this is not the way to go. And finally, I want to see vibrant towns. And I think right now, those are struggling.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for hosting tonight, and thank you, everyone, for coming. My name is Justin Phillips, and I'm running for Smithtown Town Council. My wife is a lifelong St. James resident. Chrissy, we have three kids, Quinn, Henry, and Arthur, who are five, four, and two. And my daughter wanted to make sure that I made sure, let you know that she is fine. A little bit about myself. I graduated from Leonard's High School, went away to college, enlisted into the Navy. After 9/11, I left the Navy and enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. I did two combat tours in Iraq as an O-311 infantry riflman in the United States Marine Corps. Came home using the GI Bill. I got my degree from, finished my degree from Hofstra in political science. Like every veteran, I took pretty much every civil service exam. And I am currently a New York City Fireman in FDNY in ladder 123 in Brooklyn. And I'll be promoted to tenant, hopefully by the end of the year. I got into politics, obviously, I told you I got my degree in it. But I really was thinking about veterans advocacy. And then, you know, all politics is locals, what they said. Started looking on what was going on in Smithtown. One of the four main tenets that I believe are, is to ensure that the downtown revitalization is done in a controlled manner and fits the characteristics of each individual hamlet that we represent. Term limits. Like Mike said, nobody should be able to stay in office forever. Twelve years is a long time to make a difference and get new ideas, new blood in. Third, I would like to oversee responsible development. This McCarthy said, people are customers. I don't see it that way. They're the bosses. They tell us what to do, and then we do it. And finally, there's four thousand veterans in the town of Smithtown. And I think they all need an office that they can find out what they deserve from their time of service.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Ms. Noah?
Good evening. I'm Councilwoman Lynn Noick. And, excuse me, but first let me say to you, thank you for serving. I'm very impressed, thank you. So I too have been born and raised here. My dad was a farmer here, as most of the dads were in those days, here in St. James, Smithtown, Kings Park, in this area. And I am proud to have served on your council for so many years. I have two daughters. I have Dana Lynn Noick and Carrie Lynn Noick. I figured I'd give them my name, just in case they ever want to run or ready. They don't. So I started out my career working for the state court system for twenty-three years under Judge Misery and, of course, the great Judge Tisch. After that, I was fortunate enough to be asked to run for the town tax receiver. I did that for six years, learned a lot about the town and the budget and what was going on. After six years, I was also fortunate enough to be asked to run for Suffolk County Legislature, which I did, and I served twelve years, as did the Kennardys. I was term limited, and at that time, I thought, I'm not ready to retire after twelve years. I wanted to do something in the town I love. My dad was a councilwoman for twenty years, and I wanted to sit in this seat. I love working in the town. The county's great, it's a different kind of an atmosphere, but the town is home. The town is, we are able to do things for all of you who live here. We are able to redo the downtown. We're able to enjoy all of the pleasures of our town, whether it's the parks, the beaches, whether it's the concerts. I am very fortunate to be here. So I ask for support, or for your problems, or your... And that's the end of the two minutes. I don't know how it goes so fast.
And that was all time. Okay, we're going to start now with Mr. Catalonado, because we rotate. The same person doesn't go first. So the questions I'll be asking were taken from leaked questions, and as I said, also questions the students had submitted. So you'll have one minute to answer, which is very short. What I suggest you all do is make some notes of things you might want to circle back to in your closing statements, because you'll have two minutes for that. Also, each candidate was given a red card, and they'll be allowed to use it twice. It means that even if they've had their minute, if they want to add something to that question rotation, you'll have one more minute, but you can only use it twice, and you don't know what the questions are. Choose well. So, Mr. Catalonado. What strategies do you propose to encourage broader community engagement in civic affairs and ensure that residents' voices are heard in local government decisions?
Okay, so I'm being told to stay seated, I'd rather stand up. But we just had, we just had the other day a town hall. We didn't know who was in that room. There were Republicans, Democrats, independents. We sat there and we listened to people talk and shared their ideas for what they, their vision for what Smithtown would be. That is something I want to see every month or two, especially if I'm on the town council. I want to be able to hear and not speak, just listen to people in the community so that I know what the issues really are. And when you hear Republicans and Democrats and independents all in a room sharing their vision, it brings together unity among everybody. People start to recognize that these differences of opinion are so important and bring added value to the conversation. So that's what I would like to see in order to encourage additional civic.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Noah?
Exactly what Mike said. The forum that we had the other night was amazing. Everybody came out, like you said, we had no idea who was who. We were respectful, we listened to everybody's opinions. And now, that's the problem in politics. When there are certain people in power, there's going to be half the people that... There's always going to be the other half that may not agree with the people in power. So how do we do that? Well, we have meetings where people that work in this town can come. I know that on the town board has meetings, but it's at two o'clock on a Tuesday when a lot of people are working and can't attend. We want to create more night meetings. And I know that they say fiscally that's not possible. But I feel like a lot of people that I've talked to have said that they would definitely come to meetings, but they just don't have the time because they're at work. And the big thing is just allowing people to give their ideas without discourse.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I'm thinking it over. Well, first of all, our town board meetings are where people come to tell us what they want, what they don't want. But looking at this young group over here, that, there's where it starts. It starts in the high schools. And I'm not sure how many young people are interested in history, but there's where it starts. Getting the young people involved. Come to us, come talk to us. It is my pleasure. If you ever wanted us to come into your classroom, call. I'd love to come into the classroom. I referenced the night meetings. For years, for years, we did night meetings. Maybe three people showed up. I don't know what it is. Maybe people are busy at night, they're busy in the day. That's why most of us give out our cellphones to our constituency. If you want to talk about something, please call me, please come to town hall. I would love it. And again, with the students, get involved. And I think that's one way of bringing you to us, because it won't be long before you get to run for something.
What we do on a weekly basis? We do it on a weekly basis. We all meet, every one of the town board members, combined hundreds of people a week. We discuss their issues, we pass it around, we talk to people about it, and when we get back to them and answers, we have town board meetings, we have chamber and conference meetings, we have Rotary meetings. So we continue to get a hold of all the residents at a time. The more you meet, you meet people on an everyday basis, and that's what I've always done. People have been happy, and I'm going to continue reaching out to as many people as I can, as often as I can.
Mr. Phillips, next one is for you. How will the town of Smithtown induce residents to reduce waste, conserve energy, and conserve water? And how would you explain the probable additional costs to the town for waste disposal once the brocade and landfill closes?
In two minutes? Okay. So first, we need to educate the community, the reality of what is happening. One minute, oh, okay. What is happening? And will continue to happen once brocade doesn't take our waste. We have to find a way to get this off. So we have to come up with viable ideas. We have to be proactive, not reactive, because this is going to happen. We need to educate on, create ideas like maybe composting, doubling recyclable pickup. They found that when recyclables start to fill up their garbage cans, they just throw it out into regular trash. So if we can create more ways to recycle and do pickups, which actually creates a profit, then we can reduce waste that we have to burn, which will reduce acid we have to get rid of. We also can incentivize a lot of the landscaping companies to use organic fertilizers to create less waste that goes into our water sources. But it really starts at educating and letting people know there's alternatives to what we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there are, when I think of it quickly, there are two things that come to mind. One of them is something we've already been doing. Our soccer fields and our baseball fields have, I think they call it turf. So these are fields that don't have to be watered. These are fields that, I guess it's synthetic, and I'm not an expert in chemistry or anything, but no chemicals go down on the ground, and water is not, the grounds aren't watered, so it doesn't go, the chemicals don't go into the ground. And that's one way, that's what we're already doing. The other thing, I think personally, is a few years ago, we used to collect recyclables, this is just my opinion, we would put them together, the paper and the plastics. Now we have to separate. I believe people get lazy, because separating is harder. And this is what I have evidence, and I know sometimes I'm guilty myself. And mentally, I have to say, separate the plastics, the papers. If they're not put out for it to be recycled, then we're wasting time.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Okay, we pretty much do a lot of it now, which includes, you know, weekly pickups, cardboard pickup, hazardous waste drop off sites. We do a paper shredding event, which we get pounds of paper. The major problem right here is we need a regional plan. Without a regional plan in county and Suffolk County, that the state will work with us instead of putting their heads, you know, in the sand, it's not going to happen. There's tons and hundreds and thousands of tons of debris that brocade is not going to take. And if there's not a regional plan to fix it, it's not going to happen. We can do everything we can on the town level, but it's bigger than us, and we need the state and the county to get involved and really start sharpening their pencils and start meeting and come to decisions.
Okay, this is a major issue facing all of Long Island. This isn't just a Smithtown issue. And all of Long Island needs to get together and create an education program, whether it be commercials, ads, Facebook ads, whatever it may be, to notify the residents of Long Island that the significant costs that are going to impact all of us once the brocade and landfill closes. So some of the things that we can do, we can create a composting program, where we put a third garbage can out. I know that's extra work for people, but if we, if we recognize just how much impact this is going to have on our residents, I think people will fall in line on those issues. I think Long Island can be a real leader in this, on this issue. We can have center, we can build hubs where we reuse, recycle, and remanufacture, where it's cyclical within these buildings. So one company's waste becomes another company's influence.
Thank you. Got the mic back. Okay, the second question, next question is also in our mental. Each summer, our town beaches are closed for more days due to nitrogen runoff and pollution in Long Island Sound. What solutions could the town offer? And would you champion a program to educate and motivate residents to help reduce that pollution? Ms. Noah?
I would love to be part of championing a program like that. And again, I would take all these students, and we could do it together, because you are the future. And I believe that. I actually think that this would be an issue for people, I would have to say more for a chemist, more for a department head. It's not something that I am familiar with. I have to be honest, I'm not a chemist. But we do have department heads, and we do have experts in the field. And I'm going to take these young people, and we're going to do it together. Thank you.
Mr. McCarthy?
Well, you said nitrogen runoff. Nitrogen runoff comes from cesspools. Majority of Smithtown is cesspool. And eventually, it works its way into the groundwater and works its way into the sound. Unfortunately, in the seventies, there was federal hundred percent grant money to do sewers throughout Suffolk County, while there was so much corruption that crashed and burned, the only partial to Long Island got done. And the current administration of Mr. Romaine and the former administration of Mr. Valone, along with the town of Smithtown supervisors, worked on getting all the downtown districts of St. James, Kings Park, in this country sewed. And that is under completion. Kings Park almost done. St. James will have a plant shortly, with that except within three to five years after the engineering's done, the money's there, and Smithtown will be done. We've got substantial amount of money due to the fact that Mr. Romaine and Mr. Wareman's help. And that's what's going to happen. Unless we get these, the sewage that goes into the water, everything you throw down the drain, it goes into the water, sooner or later, it goes into your groundwater, and sooner or later, it goes out into Long Island Sound. Until we solve the sewage issue, and we're working on it, but it's a lot bigger than just the downtown districts.
Okay, thank you.
I don't think we have time to wait for our sewers to be completed. I've been hearing for twenty years that our sewers are going to be hooked up any day, and it seems to never come to fruition. So we have to do things now in order to, in order to avoid the next stream runoff into our waters. And we have to recognize that if we don't do something now, that's going to impact our own values too. If people can't use the beaches and the waterways, that impacts our own values. So what are some things we can do? We can encourage people and new students as well to help build rain gardens where water collects, right? And then gets filtered through the ground. We can help build natural barriers that help to filter out nitrogen by our waterways. We can invest in permeable walkways and roads that help to filter out the nitrogen.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Phillips?
The benefit of going last is you get to hear everybody's answers, but it's troublesome when they all have your answer. Everybody was right. We have to do something with our cesspools. We have to incentivize people to upgrade their cesspools, to create the newer systems. Because unless they're trying to sell their home, they can still have a system that was created in 1980s. We need to educate in schools, have programs where we can tell young kids what happens when we... Everyone wants a green lawn, but that takes fertilizer. That takes all this nitrogen that they throw on your lawns, and then when it rains, it goes right down into the street, down in the sewers, out into the ocean. Beaches are closed. So we need to come up with ways, like I said before, talk to our businesses, the landscapers account. Come up with an idea of organic fertilizer, nitrogen replacements. We also, like Mike said, we can just use what we have when it comes to damming up and collecting as much of the rainwater waste that we have.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, do you want to go?
You know, I'm thinking about your answer, which is a great answer. I do believe that the county had a law about what types of fertilizers and chemicals you could use on your lawn. So I think that does help with the nitrogen problem.
Okay, thank you. Dorothy, I'm going to go for a two-minute time on this one now. I'm combining two questions here, so I'm giving you two minutes. These are both from the students, and they're related. One is, and I'm going to actually ask them both at the same time, so you can do a combined answer. Are there any plans in Smithtown to accommodate and create a safe environment for increasingly popular e-bikes? And the second is, there are many spots around town where pedestrian accidents occur, especially, and remember, we're at high school, east here, especially on North Country Road. Similarly, to have the town added new crosswalks on Lake Avenue, do you have any similar plans to improve pedestrian safety around town? So if I can just make a comment, we're not merging pedestrian safety and e-bikes. That's not a good combo. But they're both traffic and road and public safety on the roads. So, Mr. McCarthy? And you can go over the minute, you can go to...
On the e-bike issue, realistically, I don't have an answer on e-bike issue. It seems like that's a bigger issue in New York City when those e-bikes are put inside, and the lithium batteries are the fire department. We can, over here, we can tell you a little bit about that, with those fires alike. When it comes down to the other issues of crosswalks, we've taken our traffic experts, and if you know on Lake Avenue, there are flashing beacons up and down all the crosswalks. Unfortunately, it's going to take education, because it seems like in Suffolk County, if someone walks on a crosswalk, it means it gets that stop. And we need to do a better job, all, everybody, town, local, county, everyone, educate people, even the stopper people in crosswalks. But we're going to continue putting the flashing beacons and the crosswalks in, and hopefully, people will pull their heads out of their phones and look up and drive, and unfortunately, and not run over people in the crosswalks.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, the flashing beacons have been a real good addition to our town. I'd love to see more of those. They really alert you to, to warn there's pedestrians crossing and to be alert. I do see other towns that have poles or signs right in over the road. I believe Huntington has it as well, which states, you know, stop for pedestrians. I think that would be a great addition to our town, especially in our downtowns, especially in Kings Park, when that gets completed. But I think more of that should help. In regards to the e-bikes, you know, our roads are not built to handle the traffic that it currently sustains. So do I believe we can add an extra lane for e-bikes? Probably not. So I don't know how to solve that problem, but we do need to look to the future, and that is one of the ways in which I can see people getting around town in the future, so, thank you.
So, I never thought I'd sound like my grandfather, but I want kids to have fun, but the e-bikes, I deal with it in the city. Let's not even talk about the lithium ion fires that they posed, but these are young kids, they don't have licenses, but these bikes do thirty, forty miles per hour, and they don't know if they're bicycles or if they're motorcycles. And sometimes, they're literally driving in the middle of the road like they're a car, and then they'll jump on the sidewalk like they're a bicycle. There's something that has to be done at a state and county level to figure out what we're going to determine what these are recreational e-bikes are, and then go from there. As far as the crosswalks, as a father, trying to get across Mergish Road to the park with a five-year-old, a four-year-old, a three-year-old, who won't want to push the button, and then cars are flying, there has to be a system where certain places, we can have community input. I know a lot of people say, I need a little traffic light at this corner. There's constantly accidents. And if we don't have a way for residents to input and let the town know, this is an issue, we want something here, and bring it to their attention, then it has to be done. And then, obviously, yes, crosswalks and the flashing are great, but sometimes on major roads, we may need a light.
I regretted to say I will stop the debate, because I do not want to interrupt people speaking with a pause. It's short, it's the amount of time and the number of questions we can have. So my apologies. And Ms. Noah?
I really don't know that I've seen many e-bikes, but this is not going to go over big. I said get rid of them all. I don't know if you can do that. They're dangerous. I don't even know, I don't even know if these kids go... I don't even know, I don't even know if these kids go to school to learn about the stop signs and how to say, how to be safe. I'm not sure about that. As far as what I just heard about, and you're right, but we do have a way to communicate. Our traffic department is very instrumental in putting up stop signs where they're needed or traffic signs. If you find a spot that is so dangerous, that's a call, well, actually to me or Tommy or whoever's on the town board. That's a call to us. We get in touch with the traffic department and they go out and they, they do some calculating. And you can get your stop sign put up. And we, I, I will say, these stop signs, sometimes, we have one, and you probably know, on Willmont Avenue, there's four stop signs. Nobody knows when anybody's going to go and wait, and we wait, and we wait. So, we do have a traffic department. They're excellent. If you do have a problem, call us. We'll get in touch with the traffic department and they can ascertain whether or not it's needed.
Okay, one more from the students and then we'll come back to the, the rest of the questions. And Mr. McCarthy, I'm sorry, Mr. Heson, no, you're next. What existing resources does the town currently fund or support to address the mental health challenges faced by students? And what do you know about the outcomes? How can the town support projects that improve student mental health by creating outdoor spaces that reduce stress?
Well, I'm not sure what the town has in place, but I, but I do know when I was on the Smithtown Board of Education, we took that issue extremely seriously. We partnered with Northwell Health to provide access to our students, or students' access to mental health care in the event that they were in, in crisis. And of course, that was with apparent cooperation. And that, I think, is something that is extremely important and something that we can do for our townships as well. If we were able to provide a service like that, where people in crisis were able to have immediate access to mental health care. People waiting for months and months and months. As a divorce attorney, sometimes I'm in the hallways of court trying to call counselors, therapists, for hours, trying to get a client, or a child, an appointment. And that is, and sometimes when we finally do, it's two, three months down the road. So, if we were able to provide a service like that to our community, it would be invaluable. It really would. It would save a lot of lives. And it would certainly be something that I would advocate for if the town can have a partnership like that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Phillips?
This is another one that's very close to me because as a veteran, we lose twenty-two veterans every day suicide and mental health issues. I myself came home and had issues that I had to take care of, but I had the opportunity to use them through the VA. So, your question isn't lost with me. Do, do we need to educate and have programs? I would hope that the town does have somebody that would be able to direct you to the help you need. The same way that I wanted to create a veterans liaison office. It will help the four thousand veterans that we have here in Smithtown with the same help. If they need help with finding out to get mental health from the VA, I would hope, we also have one to help young students. As far as the green space, I believe in our last debate, Mr. McCarthy said we're ninety-nine percent developed. So we need to take the opportunities to save that last one percent and not develop it into apartment complexes, but create parks, create open spaces for the young that are having issues, that just want to get out away from everything and be able to figure out what's going on in their lives.
Thank you.
I'm glad you asked this question because we in the town of Smithtown have two departments that are so important to me and I think to all of you. We have the Horizons Department. Horizons, if you don't know about it, it's right on Jer, right on Smithtown, right on the main street. Horizons deals with opioid addiction, alcohol addiction, but it also deals with psychiatric services, individual counseling for people that are in trouble, whether it's young or old. It deals with group counseling, rehabilitation, mental health. And not only do we have Horizons, but within the same building, we have the Smithtown Youth Services, which also, obviously for youth, deals with crisis. There are numbers you can call. If you go on the town website, and this is so important, if you go on the town website, if you know anybody that's in trouble, you can find, particularly for the youth, there's the Youth Bureau. If you know someone in trouble, whether it's rehabilitation from alcohol or drugs, you can call Horizons. We have help in the town and enough people don't know about it and we hope it's so important. So I thank you for the opportunity to spread this word.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy?
Great job, I answered the question a hundred percent. And she's a hundred percent right. The Youth Bureau, the Horizons Bureau, the school guidance counselors, everybody, mom, dad, grandparents, everybody has to be in touch with their children to understand what's going on. Because peer pressure, I mean, that they go through at a young age, from eight years old or eighth grade through high school, is hard on the kids. And the schools see them every day, every day, every day. So it takes the schools, it takes the parents, and it takes the town and the state and the federal government to get involved on the county. So everybody just continues working together like that's happening now. But we need to always make it better. You know, we can stop making things better.
Thank you. Uh, listen.
So I just want to add, with an extra minute. It's great that we do have these programs, but it's terrible that nobody knows about them. And we have to figure out how do we disseminate this information, especially to the younger generation. And they are, my, my daughter runs circles around me. She's five years old with my tablet and the TV remote. And so we have to be able to get these things out into, you know, social media, places like that. And then to what we were talking about before, having forums where it actually brings not the voters, but the young, the future, and let them have an opportunity to know what the town is doing for them, not just the people that are going to keep us in office.
Thank you. Don't put the mic down.
Yes, sir.
Oops. You're next. Again, combining a student question with a prepared question. The student said, and this is just a one-minute answer. What are you doing along with Main Street to make it look nice and help the homeless people? And I'll add to that, what communities in Suffolk do you feel have created a model for a more vibrant downtown? And how can Smithtown possibly learn from them? Okay, shall I repeat the question?
The question.
Yeah. What communities in Suffolk do you feel have created a model for a more vibrant downtown? And how can Smithtown learn from them and adapt their successful strategies? So it's Main Street, homeless, and what can we learn from others?
So, we had that forum the other night and we had a former town planner. And, you know, there's a lot, it's like the chicken or the egg. What do you need first? Do you need the people to come for a vibrant downtown? Or do you need the businesses before the vibrant downtown? And he said neither. What you need is, you need, like Mr. McCarthy said, you need sewers. Patchogue is a perfect example. They focus solely on getting sewage and sewer pipes, so these businesses. Because you can't maintain this waste, the wastewater for restaurants and other businesses. So we need to focus on finishing the sewers in Kings Park. We need to finish the sewer in St. James. I know we keep being told that they're going to be finished, but that's what we need to do so we can start bringing in the restaurants that need to be able to dispose of their wastewater. As far as homeless, again, it's educate. People need to understand when you're homeless, there's opportunities if you don't want to be homeless anymore, through the county, through the state. You need to guide them and, you know, show them the direction where they can get help so they can find shelter and remove themselves from the situation. And then the last part was, I don't know. Main Street. And Main Street, that's it. Every, every hamlet has its own characteristics and we need to maintain those characteristics with each individual town in trying to revitalize those downtown hamlets.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Noak?
Well, first, as a councilwoman and a former legislator representing this town, and I don't say Patchogue to my constituents. We don't want that, but I know where you're going with that and I know, I know you didn't mean exactly, I hope not. But our downtowns, yes, you're right, they're waiting for our sewers. But in the interim, there are a lot of stores that can go up without, without the necessity of the rest of the water that the restaurants use. Take a look down Lake Avenue in St. James. We have done an amazing job. I believe that the town board, with the help of our Parks Department and our Traffic Department, has done an amazing job. I walk, I walk, sometimes I walk up and down the town of St. James, which I did yesterday. Noticed one store closed down and now, wait for this, we have a wine bar going into the town of St. James. That's, that's getting somewhere. That brings in foot traffic. We have little stores, little clinics, and we have those walkways that you talked about already.
Mr. McCarthy?
Well, Main Street, I think, is the best around. I think, well, Patchogue had nowhere to go because of the slum and they have some good areas. It was, there was nothing left. It was, my mother came to Patchogue and there was nothing, nothing good about Patchogue going on on Main Street. So they did a phenomenal job. But I know little bits and pieces of that and little bits and pieces of, of little things in Southampton, like we kind of did on Lake Avenue. And the board basically, you know, decided to pay and rebuild Lake Avenue complete from one end to the other. And it came out beautiful. So I have to say, it's my favorite downtown right now is St. James. The next one's going to be Kings Park, those sewers are going online. And the next one after that is going to be downtown Smithtown with the beautification money we got, the DRI money that the supervisor got in the state of New York, ten million dollars, the beautification money and DRI money that the supervisor and town board got, is just going on. It's not happening tomorrow, but it's happening within the next three, four, five years. You're going to see it and it's going to make a difference. And it's already making a difference in St. James because we got ninety-seven percent occupancy.
I don't know what you're looking at, but for me, most of these buildings that I see on Lake Avenue and, and Smithtown and, and Kings Park, they look like they haven't been changed since when your family first came here in the nineteen thirties. We need to do more. We, we need to do a lot more. We can, we can find grant money to help building owners fix up their facades. We can, we can help to create, bring in people into this town with maybe pop-up stores in some of these vacant buildings. Right? Where we're bringing in breweries and wineries just for weeks at a time, right? Go in some of these vacant buildings. I tried to rent property downtown. I, I couldn't even get into some of these properties because right away, they, they would rather it vacant than to have me rent and pay them money on a monthly basis. Because what I would pay in rent would be less than what their tax break was for their tax loss that they, that they would receive.
Okay. Mr. McCarthy, you wanted to do a comment?
I don't know any landlord that's going to take a tax loss over income. We did have, the supervisor spearheaded this. We did take the offer money and we offered every hamlet in the downtown's money and we paid fifty percent of their cost to revitalize their storefronts. I think it was either one or two buildings and all of them took it. Lake Avenue looks great, but it would have been nicer to downtown people and Kings Park took it. But unfortunately, you have a lot of absentee landlords. The landlords want the sewers and they maybe will do something once they know they can get the floor, they can get a board of health committee to expand and get more restaurants in them and maybe apartments above them so that way they can get foot traffic. But until we get the foot traffic domain in this, Smithtown and downtown Kings Park, it's going to take some time. But we offered the money and they didn't come. And it was offered fifty percent to fix their fronts of all their buildings.
Thank you. And for McCarthy, Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. Well, that's, that's the problem, right? We, we have these vacant buildings that are waiting for sewers to be put in. We have a sewer to nowhere in, in, in St. James that has been three point nine million dollars in taxpayer money. And, and there's no real timeline for this thing to be hooked up at all, right? So what are we going to do? We're just going to sit around and wait as these things remain vacant, derelicts falling apart? We need light laws. We need to enforce those light laws. We need to make sure that our, that if people are just leaving these vacant for twelve months, thirteen months, fourteen months, we need to get in there and start to do something with these landlords, find them, right? There's got to be something we can do to make sure that they're not just waiting for years while they, while their buildings crumble.
Okay. One more comment from Mr. McCarthy?
Light laws, and we didn't do anything on light laws. We got rid of a twenty-five-year city vacant decrepit concrete plant, which is now the Long Island headquarters for CardMax. We took down, finished within ninety days a rezoning application that turned Crazy Heights, that was vacant for about twenty-two years, and turned it into the largest Tesla dealer on Long Island. We go on and on, this, every single building that I can recall at this moment has been either torn down or revitalized. And that's why this town board is standing atop each and every one and calling the owners to say, let's get together and try to get the blighted buildings done. And if they're blighted enough, I don't know what the count is now, but it's probably over twenty-five to thirty buildings we have torn down because we couldn't get the cooperation and the buildings weren't going to fall down. And we had them raided and did a public hearing to have them condemned and they were torn down. We got the old Chinese food restaurant in St. James, that's being torn down momentarily. They just got their permits last week. That's going to be a beautiful medical center and some other store. There's a lot of things that have been done. Don't buy into it if it's falling down and we'll leave it at that way, it's alive.
Okay, we're going to have one more question and then we're going to go to the closing statements. Okay, and this, I gather, is your favorite subject that happens while we're here debating. But this comes from the students as well. Our new Smithtown residential development is overwhelmingly unaffordable to young families and seniors. What is your plan for accessory dwelling units or similar ways for seniors to stay in their homes and our children to rent their first apartment locally?
Well, I don't think there's an easy way in this town for children, for our young people to afford to live. And no, I'm not bringing my daughter back in my house, I'm done. But if they're to buy a home, they have to come up with two hundred thousand dollars in deposits to, before they can get a mortgage. They have to make a certain amount of money. So yes, we have to have apartments. We have to have apartments because all you need to get into an apartment is a security deposit. And maybe, maybe a parent can help you pay for the rent. These young people, if I gave them my house, cannot afford the fuel truck that goes down, cannot afford the PSE and G. So that's where they start and they save. And I think that's the answer, apartments. I'm sorry.
Please, the candidates are the ones who are educated, you.
I don't know, I lost track. Well, just to go back to the charm of St. James, because I lost track of the other question.
Okay, finish your sentence because I.
Some of those older buildings in St. James, I've walked, I've walked in St. James. They fixed them beautifully. Take a walk, go see. Some of the real estate offices, some are very pretty. I'm going to take pictures and give them to you.
Thank you. Mr. McCarthy? Back to accessory dwelling units and difficulties for young families?
It's difficult and it's harder for us to figure out when ninety-seven to ninety-nine percent develop. And a half acre of property is going for no less than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the basic average house is five hundred thousand dollars. It's hard, it's going to be hard. I don't know the answer. I mean, it's a very affluent town and it's forced the prices of the houses to be in major demand. And your average closing right now is between seven and nine hundred thousand dollars unless it's a very, very small house. I don't know any kid getting out of college with three, four hundred thousand dollars in student loans and I can afford that off the top of your head. There is some ways. There is some ways to do it by giving additional units into complexes and stuff and bringing those rents to an affordable, really affordable rents. But, you know, you've got to see if the appetite's there with the constituents of the town. Most people don't want to see, you know, it happen. But you're going to have to somewhere get people that are doing these, bringing these numbers down. But they're so expensive, the rents are expensive. It's not going to be easy. Work hard, get a great education, and get a great job, and hopefully save up like all we all did growing up and get there. My parents paid $5,000 for their house. You know, I'd pay a lot more than that.
Time's up. Thank you.
There certainly is no easy way when we're prioritizing developers' interests over that of our residents, especially our young residents, right? When we look at Beachwood, which is being built, 288 units, luxury apartments, luxury houses, what we need to do is not chain zoning, right? We need to make sure that we're building homes there that our young can afford, small houses, that seniors can maybe retire into, that our young can purchase, right? Those are the things that we need to do, but our developers need density. And we're prioritizing their interests over ours. There's other things we can do in this community. Other towns offer down payment assistance. $30,000, $35,000 for first-time home buyers is down payment assistance. Other communities do a sliding scale of taxes for the first five years, let's say, right? Your real estate taxes start out a little bit lower when you first buy the house. And then over the next five years, it grows. And that's ways that we can keep our young here and stop that brain drain from happening.
So the answer isn't to take that 1% of undeveloped land and develop it into apartments. Now, we need to dig this land and see what it's zoned for and see how it fits the characteristics of those towns. Now, we need to create housing for our young, but $3500 apartment a month isn't the answer. And when they're done, they have nothing to show for it. We need to build it smaller, create something that young families can start off, gain equity, and as their family grows, they can sell it, and then they can have a down payment to stay and buy in Smithtown. When we look at the idea that there are many other, like Mike said, there are many other towns that have programs where you can incentivize, like Mike said, the tax breaks to start off for the first two years, do it on a sliding scale, have the fee on closing costs that will create a fund that we can help young Smithtown families buy a home and stay in Smithtown with help for the down payment.
I just wanted to comment on your idea. I did. It's the last question. I don't want it to go to waste. Just a question. I think your idea of the first home assistance is a great idea. And I'm going to sign up my daughter. But who's going to pay for it? That's the problem. Where are we going to get the money? Who's going to pay for it? Are we going to put a line item on a budget, or are we going to get the county to pay for it? Your municipality, if we can't pay for it, I wish you could though.
Maybe instead of giving such huge tax breaks to our developers, we put that money back into the community and provide these grants. The other thing that we can do is make them put aside money. They're saving tons of money when they come here and they develop in our community. They may need to put a little bit aside each year so that our young can remain in this community.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to go to the close. This is two minutes each. We're doing it in the same order we started. So Mr. McCarthy, you've got two minutes to close each day.
Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight. Thank you for all the questions that you answered, and hope we gave you an insight into what goes on in town government on a daily basis. It's a 24/7. It doesn't stop. I remember that town board works and works and works and works 24/7, seven days a week. They just continue. Our department heads do the same. They work, you know, the calls, texts, emails on Saturday, Sunday. Everybody that's currently in the town government really works hard and cares for the citizens of this town. And I'm going to, if re-elected, I'll continue to do what I've done for the past years I've been here, is continuing, taking care of the constituents and doing what's right for everyone here. There's no ego, there's no title. It's all just doing the work and doing whatever you can and doing the best for the people that live in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Yes. Again, thank you all for coming tonight, and thank you to League Women's Voters for hosting tonight. When I first decided to run for town council, I didn't run for the title, I'm not running for the salary. I'm running because I invested interest in this community, and I want to see it grow. I want to see it better. I want to bring accountability and integrity to the town council and to the board. You know, this town council goes 5-0 on everything, right? Everything gets passed right through. And this 4% rate that they're giving themselves, this 10% increase on the budget, if it's more than that, that'll be passed as well, right? And I just want everyone here to know that that is not my plan if I was, when I get elected, to take that 4%. That 4% increase, I am donating that 4% increase back to the charitable organizations in our community. And I would advocate as well for wage freeze among all of the executive board here. Because I'm sick and tired of seeing this board continue to take money from our taxpayers, 5-0, without any accountability, right? So again, my goal is to bring integrity to this board, and that to me means doing what's right when no one is watching, right? And that means saying no to developer or donor money when those same developers and donors are getting approved for zoning changes, right? It means saying no when you find out that your supervisor is paying $500 a month or more than that for his BMW through donated funds. And those are the things that I will guarantee that I bring to the board. I will stand up when I see those things. I will speak out when I see those things. And I hope that I'll win your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
So my biggest thing is, you've heard different visions on how to lead Smithtown forward. One has been consistent, providing developers the easiest track to the biggest buck. The other is someone who doesn't want to do this forever. We have an idea. We have a finite amount of time to get it done. We want to create term limits. Because again, this isn't something that we want to do forever. We understand that when powers that be stay in power, they get stagnant. There's no, nobody needs, they don't have to answer to anybody anymore. They released the budget, and they said in our last debate that they did it because they didn't want us to think they were saving it for after. Well, they had to release the budget. It wasn't out of the kindness of their hearts. And it showed that they were going to give themselves another raise, and they had to pierce the cap. So we have two different visions here. We want financial fiscal management. We want integrity. We want term limits. So nobody can stay in office indefinitely. And that's really what it is. When it comes down to voting, if you like what somebody says, it doesn't matter if they're blue or red. Go into that voting box on November 4th and do what you believe is right, not because of what party they are.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters, this is like Deja Group, thank you for having us. First of all, I want to talk about our accomplishments under our great supervisor at Warheim. And I have to say that because our supervisor worked hard on a proposed budget. If anybody knows how this works, the supervisor has to have a proposed budget. We then have outright from our public, the public portion. And then we decide on what we want to keep and what we don't want to keep. So if you don't know how this operates, that's how it operates. Our accomplishments are many. We, I believe in one mantra in the town of Smithtown. And I know what my neighbors like, and I think I know what you like, and that's quality of life. And the quality of life that we give you on this town board is endless. And we start with all our parks and our beaches and taking care of things for the young people. We have new ball fields, terraces, we didn't say terraces, synthetic terraces. Why do we put those in? So the kids don't fall around and break their legs. We have done for this town, and we continue to do for this town. We have a senior center that is second to no senior center. When I tell you what a senior's view and a way of life for our seniors, you have no idea. You should go on our website and take a look. And back to what you said about advertising for Horizons and for the Youth Bureau. If you look at any of the local papers, any of the programs they run, are always in the local papers. We completed the Town Comprehensive Plan. I believe this town board, when you talk about 5-0 in a vote, you have no idea. Our supervisor meets with us all the time. We meet, we talk about what's going on. If we disagree, we find a way to work together. That's why you see that.
Thank you. There's some lead material left to take outside for us to...